Good evening. I'd like to call to order the July meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. To begin, we'll go around and introduce ourselves and if you wish to, share something that you are reading. Chris, we'll start with you.
Chris Hall, and I'm starting. I just got this book today, How Beautiful We Were by Mbo. I don't know how to say his last name. Anyways, for my book club, so I'll find out what it's about. My name is Jamie Burkhart, and I just bought from the library bookstore, All the Light. We cannot see? Yeah, I'm afraid it's gonna make me cry, but just picked that one up.
My name is Josh Wolfe. I'm reading, I just started reading Charlie Hustle, The Rise and Fall of Pete Rose and the Last Glory Days of Baseball.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I am listening to The Secret Language of Birds by Lynn Kelly, and reading Fatal Throne by Candace Fleming and a collection of different authors. She's just one of them.
I'm Kathy Loser, and I just picked up Lady Tan's Woman, Circle of Women. It's about, in the Ming Dynasty, a woman has become a physician.
I'm Amy O'Shaughnessy, and I'm reading Come and Get It by Kylie Reed.
And Michelle Wash, reading The Four Pivots by Sean A. Genwright.
Alright, thank you. And we're gonna begin this evening with actually approving, or hopefully, two consent agenda items. And we were unable to, we didn't have a quorum last month, so we were unable to do this for last month. So we're gonna begin with the consent agenda items from the June 26th meeting. So these were mostly items from the May, from the month of May. So we're gonna be looking at the minutes of the May 15th board meeting, monthly financial report for the June meeting, monthly bills for payment for the June meeting, and the personal report for the June meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda items from June signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And now we're going to look at the consent agenda items from, for this month, which would be the minutes from the June 26th board meeting, the monthly financial report, the monthly bills for payment, personal report, and the board meeting calendar. Do we have a motion to approve these consent agenda items?
Second.
Questions or comments regarding these items? Seeing none, all in favor of approving this month's consent agenda items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we're gonna hear from Josh Wolfe for the Director's Monthly Report.
Thank you. Busy month. Circulation services prepared for summer reading by completing a full round of shelf reading in all collections while working on shifting projects to make space for returns and shelf displays and getting ready for the big summer reading rush. Usage of Hoopla, it seems like every month we talk about the increasing usage of Hoopla. Our online platform that provides access to digital audio and ebooks as well as movies and music increased again in June with 132 new users. The top trending title in Hoopla for MCPL in June was the ebook edition of College Girl Missing with a lot of local importance. It bumped the audiobook of A Court of Thorns and Roses. Adult Services Librarian Maggie Hutt hosted a community resource fair which drew nearly 150 people. The program assisted community members with navigating Bloomington's social assistance programs, including childcare, health insurance, food and housing resources. Local groups participating included the Hoosier Hills Food Bank, South Central Community Action Program, and El Centro. Monroe County Youth Council held their first Summer of Service event in the ground floor study room on June 5th. Teens helped assemble cooling kits for Beacon, which contained items specifically requested by people in the community experiencing homelessness. The teens worked really well together compiling the kits and writing notes for the recipients. Children's librarians visited schools within the MCCSC district and private schools across Monroe County to raise awareness about the summer reading program. This outreach initiative enabled us to connect with educators, libraries, and school administrators while disseminating information about the various library services, including the Bookmobile. I'm very pleased to report that 2,500 children and tweens signed up for the summer reading program in June, and we are still signing people up. Anybody out there watching, the program doesn't end until July 31st. And adult and teens are doing very well, too. The Cats Cruise Brave the Heat for a Street Dance Rewind from the Monroe County History Center on June 29th. The Outdoor Punk Music Festival held between Washington and Lincoln Streets showed definitively that the history of Bloomington punk rock is still being written. And I'll take any questions if you have them.
Hey?
I just have a comment. How many words lies here on the agenda? But today at the book corner, I had two women came in and they sang praises of your staff on the second floor helping them navigate and figure out some things. And they just said, oh, please tell the director that they were very happy with the service they received today.
Oh, thank you for that.
Thank you for that update, Josh. Next, we're gonna move on to some old business items. First, we're gonna look at approving a temporary COVID leave policy, or actually, ending a temporary COVID leave policy. So do we have a motion to approve the termination of the temporary COVID leave policy?
Second.
Okay, and then we have Becky Throckmorton, who's going to speak a little bit about this policy and why we're ending it.
So I know I spoke at our last board meeting, so this will be a little bit of a repeat. But again, just wanted to thank the board for extending the paid COVID leave as long as we did. I know it was very unusual for other businesses to extend that as long as we did. And so the impact that's had on staff and the ability for us to keep COVID from becoming a bigger issue among staff and spreading has been really, really appreciated and very valued. With the end of the pandemic and the changes in the CDC guidelines, we felt like it was appropriate to suggest that we ended that policy. We've had a decrease in the number of cases that we've had. And with the current guidelines saying that COVID is treated more like a respiratory illness and is 24 hours fever-free, we felt like it was the appropriate time to end that extended policy that we had. Any questions?
I've just seen around many people recently who seem to be contracting COVID. But I know, so I guess I'm wondering, even though you say it's down, and I know that in the newspaper and other places, they have the combination of the three different RS, whatever the letters are on different things.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, is this a good time to stop?
Yeah, I think that's a valid question. We have been keeping an eye on the number of cases that we've had because we do track paid COVID leave, and that has decreased significantly, especially over the last six months and even kind of as we've gotten into the summer. We've seen significant decreases every time that we've renewed the policy. With the current CDC guidelines being 24 hours fever-free, our folks have access to paid sick leave. And so we felt like that was appropriate to go back to the paid sick leave. And then the next policy that we're proposing here is a test pilot program for those folks who don't have access to sick leave, to give them something essentially to replace that COVID leave that we're taking away. Yeah.
All those in favor of approving the termination of the temporary COVID leave policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. And then next, we're gonna move on to, again, just what Becky spoke about, the pilot policy proposal for contagious illness leave for those employees that work between 15 and 18 hours a week. So do we have a motion to approve this new policy?
So moved, second.
Okay, and Becky, you'll go ahead and explain this new policy that we're gonna give a try.
So we are proposing that this is a six-month trial run. We kinda wanna see how it works and if 25 hours is gonna be the right number of hours for our folks who work 15 to 18 hours. So anyone under 20 hours currently does not have access to paid sick leave. And so this is a policy that will give them access to a bank of paid sick leave for a contagious illness. There's a little bit of an explanation about why we're doing this. I'm happy to read it to you if it's not in the packet, but I didn't wanna redo a whole page of text. But basically, it's gonna give them access to 25 hours of contagious illness time that they can use as they need it for anything that might be COVID or it might be, you know, flu, RSV, strep, anything like that that could potentially be passed from staff member to staff member. And they just will request it in our HRS system and be able to take that time off as paid time. Yeah, it's just for contagious illnesses for our 15-
Not for like doctor's appointments or things like that?
Correct. Our 15 to 18 hour folks are able to take unpaid time, and then they're also able to flex their schedule.
Okay.
And so this is just to cover that contagious illness.
What about if their child is, has a contagious illness?
So it's just for the, like, employee themselves. And the intention on it is to keep contagious illnesses out of the library and to keep things from spreading from employee to employee.
Still, are they gonna, I think they're still up in the front, aren't they? Just four possibilities? Okay.
Our facilities department provides those.
Okay, they're gonna continue?
Yes, yes, yeah. Although we do run out sometimes, so if you're ever missing one, just ask them to do that. They'll borrow one from another.
I still carry mine.
Because this is a pilot policy, I assume that there could be changes to it when we come back in six months, seeing on how it's working, making adjustments to it.
Yeah, so we're proposing that this runs until December 31st, and it will be retroactive back to July 1st. I'm not aware of anything that's happened between the last meeting and this one, but we would retroact that back to July 1st so that folks wouldn't have a gap between our COVID leave ending and this contagious illness policy coming in effect. And then probably in the December meeting, we would have the new policy proposal for making this a full-time benefit. Or more permanent benefit, not full-time, but.
For the employees that are 15 to 18 hour, if they take unpaid time, is there a penalty?
There's not, no. And they can always flex their schedule, so if they miss a shift because they had a doctor's appointment or something, they always have the option to flex that and make it up on a different shift as well. But there's no penalty for having unpaid time.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the pilot policy to extend contagious illness leave for the employees that work under 20 hours a week signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Becky. Okay, and next, we're gonna move on to new business. And we're just gonna hear for the first time the draft of the 2025 financial budget. So Gary.
So tonight, we take our first look at the 2025 budget. Then next month, at the August 21st board meeting, we'll present a request for the board to approve the public advertisement of the 2025 budget. After taxpayers have had a chance to see the advertised budget totals, there will be a public hearing on the budget at the September 18th meeting, which will be at the Southwest Branch. And then the final step in the process will be to adopt the budget at the October 16th board meeting. So this slide is a summary of the 2025 budget compared to last year's budget. And if it's hard to see, it's also on page 98 in your packet. So, starting at the top with the revenue, for next year, the growth quotient will be 4%. The 4% is based on the rate of increase in personal income for all Indiana residents. The property tax levy, which makes up most of the library's income, will increase to about $7.97 million. The next biggest source of revenue is from the library's share of local income taxes, which is expected to be about $2.8 million in 2025. Total operating revenue that includes investment income, excise tax revenue, lost and damaged fees, and other miscellaneous is estimated to be about $11.2 million. In addition to the operating fund revenue, there will also be property tax revenue flowing into the debt fund to cover the library's debt payments that will be due in 2025. The debt fund revenue is estimated to be about $950,000. Moving to the spending category, the bottom line for the total spending budget for next year is about $13.2 million. The total spending budget that includes all funds is also limited to the amount of increase from the 2024 budget. The limit is the growth quotient, so the spending increase can only go up by 4% from last year's budget. Most of the operating cost is budgeted in wages and benefits, in the wages and benefits category. Total operating costs are budgeted to increase by about $700,000. Before moving to the next slide, are there any questions about this report showing next year's budget estimates? Okay. Let's see. I prepared this report to show the trends in the major categories of operating revenue and cost. The data on this report is based on actual spending and revenue. This report is on page 110 in the packet. So let's go right to the bottom line because it shows the actual operating surplus trend for the past years and what is expected for the current year and next year. So looking back at 2021, the library had an operating surplus of about $1.8 million, which was allocated to the branch project. Then, in 2022, the surplus was a little over a million dollars. We allocated $240,000 to the branch and carried over about $800,000 in the rainy day fund. The 2023 surplus was about $438,000. I think the operating surplus for 2024 will be in the $400,000 to $800,000 range. The worksheet is showing a surplus of about $750,000 for 2024. And then in 2025, this worksheet shows an estimated surplus of about $136,000. The accumulated surplus, the accumulation of surplus operating funds by the end of 2025 could possibly amount to about $2.1 million in the rainy day fund for a future project. Part of the library's mission is to provide the best possible service to the community, given the availability of funds. In the near term, available funds will cover increased operating costs related to the new branch opening and changes resulting from the recent compensation study. For the long, for the long term, in the next five to six years, funding availability and library service needs will increase as Bloomington grows. The growth quotient, which determines the rate of increase in the library's property tax revenue, is capped at 4% for 2025. Revenue increases for the next 10 years, or for the past, revenue increases over the past 10 years have allowed the library to add the Southwest Branch, renovate and expand the Allittsville Branch, and renovate the main library. All of this service expansion, and the tax rate has decreased. The increase in the county property assessed value for residents and businesses is keeping the library tax rate under nine cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. The library tax rate decreased from 10.97 cents in 2011 to 8.48 cents in 2024. In January 2025, for the Board of Finance meeting, after we know for sure what the 2024 operating surplus is, we'll start looking at future service expansion options made possible by the growing library revenue in a growing community with growing service needs. Any questions?
Who makes the determination of what the library tax rate will be adjusted to?
So the library tax rate is based, well, it, what we do first is we take the taxes from last year, increase them by the growth quotient. So that gives us our tax revenue figure, and then that is divided by the assessed value. So that rate is a formula. And, and, well, the rate, the tax rate is not limited to 4%, but the growth quotient, the increase, is limited to 4%. And then the tax rate is just a function of whatever that tax revenue calculates out to, and then, and then that is divided by total county assessed value. And, and so, as assessed value goes up, even though our revenue is going up, it's keeping that rate low. The assessed value is rising at a faster rate than the growth quotient. So as long as we're in that mode, we're in good shape. If it ever turns around, we're hurting.
Who created the formula? Is that at state level?
It's the state government, the Department of Local Government Finance. And that formula for the growth quotient for, for last year, 2023, when, when you do the calculation, the data comes from the Bureau of Economic Analysis. And so it has Indiana non-farm income. And, and so they look at that for six years. They look at the increased percent each of those years, and then they divide it by six. The rate for 2023, if they did the actual calculation, was over 5%. And that's why they put the 4% limit in it, and that's why they've done it again this year. So, so it's the DLGF that makes that determination on whether to let the formula use what it results in or do they have to change it for some reason?
So regarding the total salary and benefits?
Yes.
This is showing that we anticipate for 2025 an increase in 320,000. Is that because of Southwest staff or?
No, it's mainly due to the anticipated cost of living increase. Which, so, so in the budget, right now, we have built in an increase of 2.8% or 80 cents an hour, whichever is higher. And that's what we did last year. And we'll, we'll make a final decision on that in December, after we know what our health insurance rates are gonna do. But that's where most of that increase is coming from. We, we don't expect a big staff change, but.
Okay. And just because I do not recall, but I think you've answered this before, why does this number look drastically different than what happened in 2023 and 2024?
Well, let's see.
Because the 2025 number looks pretty close to what was happening in 2022.
Give me a pull. So the figure that you are looking at for 2025, the 5,980, 5,980,000?
Uh, no, under total salary and benefits, it looks like there's an anticipated increase of 320,000.
Yeah.
So that's significantly different than the, the increase from 2023 and then 2024.
Oh, okay, I'm with you now.
Yeah, so what's, what happened?
So in 2023, the Southwest Branch opened in June. So we had six months where we had that additional staff
Okay.
compared to the previous year.
Okay.
And then, in 2024, because the Southwest Branch was open for 12 months, it, it's another big increase because it was only open for six months the previous-
Gotcha.
And now we're leveling out.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Does the library have a number of salaried employees who would be affected by the federal salaried requirement that happens? There was a bump that happened June 30th and then another, then January 1st. Does the library have employees who would be affected by that? FSSA?
This may be a, yeah. That sounds like the expert on this stuff. Could answer that.
Yeah, you're asking about the FLSA. Oh.
Yeah, yes, I didn't know what the acronym was, but thank you. Yeah, the federal requirement for salaried employees.
So we actually didn't have any changes for our staff because we kinda knew it was coming. And we've been conservative on what we do as far as salaried versus hourly folks. And so most of our folks who are full-time are actually hourly, and so they're paid 37 and a half hours a week.
Oh, okay.
And so the requirements are for salaried folks to make sure they're not working more than 40 hours a week without overtime pay.
Right, okay, great, okay, thank you. Sorry, Gary, did you wanna?
Well, I will happily answer any other questions.
Okay, one more question.
Sure.
Are we at all concerned that the operating surplus looks so low? The 136,000, like, are we in a good place with that?
I, when I do my estimates, I try to overestimate on cost and underestimate. So it's, it's a conservative estimate. If, if it was a negative number, then we might start getting concerned, but I'm, I'm hoping that it would, would be more than that 136, but I wanna use a, I'd rather have it be more than less.
Sure, okay.
I do try to do the estimates conservatively.
It looks very conservative compared to the other years. Okay.
Maybe it'll go up next year.
Okay, okay.
Newer person on the committee, can the rainy day fund be used, let's say it does come in in the red, next year so that there's not an operating surplus? Can the rainy day fund adjust for unanticipated costs through that year?
The rainy day funds can be used basically for anything that operating funds can be used for.
Gotcha.
So, yes, that's a big backstop for any big surprises.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I know you tried to control for this, and I was, I moved slow, so if we could go back to page 94?
Yeah.
Or 98, I'm sorry. The projected investment earnings for 2025 are lower than 2024, and we don't have a reason to be concerned about that either?
That's just another case where I'm, since I don't know if interest rates are gonna continue like they are, I didn't wanna put a high number in there.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully, we will beat that number by a bunch.
Okay. Okay, those are all my questions.
Okay. I don't plan to.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Okay. Next, we're gonna move on to the department updates, and we're gonna hear from Ned Ba about the director, the Information Technology Department.
Hi, I'm Ned Ba, I'm the IT Director, and this is my annual IT department update. The IT department at the library is relatively small, we're made up of five people, including myself. There's Paula Gray Overtum, our web administrator, Vanessa Schwegman, our Polaris and phone system administrator, Cody Mullis, our network administrator, and Dakota Erickson, our tech support. Together, we support library staff and patrons in all things technical and computer related. That includes maintaining the databases or the database of our library collection and patron accounts. That includes our staff computers, our public computers, the phones, our internal network, and Wi-Fi access for both staff and the public. I last presented to the board in August of twenty three, and in that update, I covered our first year with our new Intranet software, Happio. And I went over IT's contribution to the opening of the Southwest branch. And I also mentioned some updated, some upcoming website-related projects that I'm gonna go over tonight. I thought about making a joke about our annual soft Southwest branch opening, but I decided that's probably a little too soon. Next year, there will hopefully be no updates with that regard, we're just glad to have them open. But as far as Happio goes, this is just a quick mention, our usage of that tool remains high. That's our Intranet software, I wouldn't have expected the stats to have gone up, I'd expect them to plateau, and that's pretty much what has happened. But when we compared this past year's usage to the previous year's statistics, we're still trending slightly up, which I find encouraging. We have slightly more staff using the mobile version of the app than we did before, we have an increase in overall channel views, we have a slight overall increase in posts to the site and page views. And so that's not a huge increase, but it is a slight increase, which tells me that it's being used, we're not seeing a dip in usage, which is great. I take that to mean that as a communication and information sharing tool, Happio has become a regularly used tool for staff, and that ties into our strategic plan under the fifth strategic goal, particularly our strategy to develop communication norms for staff by having an agreed-upon communication tool for sharing information. So I don't have any huge news, except to say that that's working as we hoped it would and see that as a success. Cody is our administrator for Happio, and he's been doing a great job with that. And then speaking of our strategic goals, strategic goal number two is to promote and support literacy, learning, and digital equity through programming and services. IT's role in that goal is often related to the website, the public website. So the website updates that I wanted to touch on, last year, I reported that we had some big update, updates coming to the public website. And with one exception, I'm happy to report that everything went as planned. As so often happens with IT projects, if it's a success, you guys don't notice it, and that's what mostly has happened with these. Some background, up until last year, our public website ran on some open source software called Drupal. That's a content management system, and it's performed well for us for many years. However, support for the version that we were on was being discontinued, and migrating to the current version of Drupal would have been a great deal of work. The current version is so much different than the one that we had been using that it would have been like migrating to an entirely new system. So Paula, our web administrator, did a lot of research into what our options were, and eventually discovered a fork of Drupal called Backdrop. And that takes the basic foundation of the Drupal software, but goes in a different direction with it to make it easier to migrate to a modern, better-supported version of it that didn't require as much of a reworking as going to the latest version of Drupal would have been. So again, that's a a big project, it was still a lot of work, but it was a much better fit for us and much more reasonable for us to try and pull off with the staff we had. After a lot of prep and development, Paula took the new site live in early November of two thousand and twenty three. And so if you don't recall, any major changes to the site around that time, that's good, that's what we wanted. We had some minor glitches, but I think for the most part, Paula was able to upgrade the backend of the website without breaking anything, and that was our main goal. And that laid the groundwork for some other updates. In April of this year, Paula did another slew of behind-the-scenes updates to the public website, and these were in preparation for our rollouts of Communico and Vega, which I'll go into more detail in just a minute if those aren't familiar to you. And again, most of these changes were behind the scenes, they had to do with making sure that our existing website would work well with the new software applications that we'd be introducing. And again, this backend went smoothly, thanks to Paula's detailed preparations. That was in April, and again, hopefully, you didn't notice any difference. That one was a little more that was not so much like a behind-the-scenes change that nobody notices. We had to actually, or Paula had to actually change the way some aspects of the website worked so that they would be compatible with the new applications, which she was able to do. You may have noticed a slight change to the way the menus work on the front page. We had to do that for compatibility reasons, but the functionality is all still there, and hopefully, it didn't feel like a big change. And like I said, those were to help us integrate with Communico and Vega. So Communico is the new calendar and scheduling software that we launched this year, and that's used by the staff and the public to reserve programs and or program rooms and view calendar events on the website. The background for that is that for a long time, we've used software called Evanced, which started out as independent library calendar software, you may be familiar with it. It was eventually purchased by Demco, and for a while, it was really the only game in town if you wanted to have a library a library calendar, a calendar software app that was aimed at library usage. However, it wasn't perfect, and support for it had begun to lag. So we were already looking for alternatives when Demco announced that they would be dropping Evanced by August of this year. So that gave us a hard deadline, a drop-dead date. We started an evaluation process to explore alternatives, and the team that did that included two IT folks, Paula and Cody. That group evaluated available options, eventually chose Communico, planned the migration to the new system, and implemented it, going live in April of this year. And I should mention, due to staffing changes, Josh generously jumped in at the last minute and made a a big contribution to getting the implementation done. Had to get up to speed very quickly at the last minute, but was played a key role in that. Let's see, that change, though, was something patrons probably would notice. I don't know if you're familiar with doing programs on the library, but around April, there was a change to the way that works. We tried to make the transition as smooth as possible for both staff and our patrons, and Paula and Cody continue to work on the implementation of that. Paula is one of our main contacts with the vendor, and she's still working with them to address some of our outstanding requests for how we'd like the system to work. Cody worked on some backend stuff, he facilitated the single sign-on for that so that our staff don't have a separate log-on to connect to the calendar software with Evanced, they always had to remember a second login. And he's also created some reporting solutions in-house. The product out of the box wasn't as easy for staff to quickly see what programs were happening at the library on a given day. And so Cody wrote some code that displays that quickly and makes it easy for people to see what's what's going on on any given day. So they've both done a great job with that. The other software application I mentioned is Vega. I think that'll ring some bells with you guys, you've probably heard us talk about that. I was hoping to be able to talk about how our implementation of that was a big success, we're not there yet. It's basically an update to our library catalog. So it makes the website more modern, brings new features to the the catalog. I anticipate it being a big hit when we finally go live with it. Vanessa has been working really hard with Polaris and with Christine Snead, another employee of the library. Everything is not where we want it to be yet, though, and so we're not ready to go live with it. I expect that to go live soon, at which point, I'm sure somebody will present it to you again and describe it in more detail, but I'm just gonna leave it at that for now. And those were the main things I wanted to touch on for my department, but I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss anything that you may want to talk about.
How excited are you about AI impacting libraries?
I am cautiously optimistic and and curious about how it will. I haven't seen, we've talked about this in our department a lot, to try and figure out, well, how could we use this? We're not a uh, we do some in-house software development, so like when Cody wrote the the report to display programs in the library easily. In theory, that's something he could have asked AI for help with. Same with when Paula is trying to figure out something with the website, how to make a a script work correctly. In theory, that would help us, but we don't do enough of that, I don't think, for it to be immediately applicable to what we do. We have also looked at having it be sort of a recommendation engine. You could have a chatbot on the website that, and you could say, I'm looking for these kind of titles, and it would come back with information. I don't think it's there yet, I think OCLC, I believe, is looking at something like that. Happio, our Intranet software, is rolling out some AI that's supposed to let you do things like, I don't know, ask, all of their examples didn't really apply to us, it was like, I I work in the Chicago office, and I'd like some information about my HR benefits, and AI would be able to tailor the response.
What about patrons and teens that are really clean, like all things tech? Are we seeing a need for, if someone wanted to say, how many articles does MCP L have addressing?
Bluey, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, I I I don't see it yet, but I think we will soon. The stuff like that is specific to our data, I think eventually the tools will be out there that we could throw an AI front-end to some of our data and get interesting insights out of it. Right now, I don't see that yet, so I'm open to any ideas if you have them. I know the AI technology right now makes it easier so that you could do a I don't know how how far in the weeds I want to go, but you can basically set up a a database or a a collection of your own data, not release it out to the wild, but have an AI front-end that would have access to it, and then you could run queries against it. So in theory, we could do something like that with our Intranet or with our internal files and be able to query it. That that would, that wouldn't be a patron-facing thing. For patrons, I think we will be able to do something like that with the catalog, but I'm I'm just not, I haven't seen it yet. Like, I I think we will see stuff like that from Amazon very shortly, they already have a a Rufus AI assistant that I believe does the same sort of thing, is sort of like a suggestion engine.
It would just be nice if the library could be the hub where citizens go if they want to engage safely with AI.
The safe part is the the
Yeah.
is the challenge. We, one of our staff was interested in doing like a stable diffusion image generation program and asked, you know, can we load this software on the computers? That stuff is not safe for the general public right now, it's very easy to come up with stuff that would be inappropriate for children. So that's not to say there aren't tools out there that could be used.
And we're not hearing interest about this in the teen space?
I I, what I have heard is staff expressing interest in, this is a hot technology, we want to be involved, and we want to figure out a way to do that. So I think we will.
Okay.
But I I'm cautiously optimistic, I think the technology is really neat. As an organization, I want to make sure if we were ever going to introduce that, though, that we did it in a way that we could feel safe about, there's not gonna be any confidentiality issues, there's not gonna be any age-inappropriate content, that sort of thing, and and that's just hard to do.
Last question about this.
Sure.
From me. What type of upskilling would be needed for your team to be able to effectively use AI? Whether it's Copilot, ChatGPT, and would that require an investment that we're not thinking about already?
No, I think we, I think my team has dabbled with it now with the free tools that are available. And if we decided that we wanted a tool, I mean, the the cutting-edge stuff right now runs about twenty bucks a month, like to get Claude from Anthropic or ChatGPT. So it's not, that aspect of isn't isn't really pricey, I think what would be a bigger deal is if we were trying to build something in-house.
And you would need like courses, certifications, things to get your team upskilled in that area?
We're talking about it in such an abstract that it's hard for me to say, I think right now, my team could make use of it without any additional training. But if we were gonna go that route, sure, we could look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're in a, we're in a weird place right now where the the stuff that's available for consumers for free is really powerful.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could figure out a way for the library to take advantage of that, that'd be great, so I'm open to ideas if you hear about anything.
I think it was Black Suit or something that hacked into the Monroe County offices, are we concerned? Your team concerned about data breaches and ransomware? I mean, are we in that realm, or? I know they tapped into Edgewood, too, so how are we prepared? Or what do we do?
Yeah.
What will we do?
Yeah, the first answer to your question is yes, I'm very concerned and nervous that what happened to them seemed like this is the sort of thing that could have very easily happened to us. We have looked into having like a third-party do penetration testing of our network, we may still do that at some point. There are some things that we do, we get like checklists from our I'm drawing a blank on the name of the insurance, but one of our insurance providers basically has a, here's your, the expected actions we expect you to be taking. And so we have some of those guidelines we follow, we have tried to stay up to date with firewall technology. There is also training for staff that we could do more of, the sort of thing where a third-party would send phishing emails to your staff and see who responds, and then use that as a training opportunity. It's my understanding that the the county did that, and they still had somebody click on something. So I I'm not saying that that's a reason not to do it, but I don't think that necessarily guarantees that you're safe. We do try to limit the amount of access that staff have to resources, so like there's only a limited number of people who have have access to HR information, for instance. Yeah, I mean, we can go into more detail, but it's, short answer is, yeah, it's definitely a concern, and we try to try to do what we can.
So what, is there like an action plan in place, or who who implements that, or what's the strategy? What's the process that goes, you go through, or?
We have
Kind of like an emergency plan?
Yeah, we we do have an emergent embarrassed that I'm not remembering the name of the document right now, but we have an emergency procedure that we follow where we have names of vendors that everybody would have access to, and we have a description of what our backup process is and what our recovery process is. That's something we're probably due to review again soon because it's been at least a year. But like our, right now, at the most basic level, all of our data is backed up, all the data that we keep locally is backed up off-site and to the cloud, so in theory, if our servers were locked out, that would be the way we'd address that, is try to restore from backup. And a lot of our data now lives in Google Workspace, so that is sort of an added level of protection. If somebody hacked into our Google Google Workspace, that would be terrible as well, but because that's managed by Google, that gives us a level of security as well, too.
What?
Go ahead.
It was impressive that your department
It'd send up the flare almost as soon as that happened, warning everybody on staff.
Oh, man, it's every IT's nightmare. Yeah, I feel for those guys, because it, I I don't think they were necessarily Yeah, I feel for those guys, because I, I don't think they were necessarily doing anything wrong. I think that the group that hacked them targets smaller organizations because they know they're, they're less likely.
It's the new economy in Russia.
Learning moment for me, people bring so many different devices and connect to networks here. You can print from your own device by connecting to MCPL. So are we at risk at all from patron access perspective? Like, are they bringing additional risk to us? And then, if so, is there an opportunity for like info security training for our patrons?
The first part of the question is, the way we try to address that is our network is divided into a staff and public zone with very little crossover between the two, and that's supposed to be our first line of defense. So when somebody comes to the library as a patron, they're connecting to the patron Wi-Fi, and when they log on to the computers, they're on the patron network. And from that network, they don't have access to our internal servers. So that's like our main line of defense as far as that goes. As far as training, like internet safety for patrons, we haven't done a lot of that. We try to make our computers as secure as possible, but we also try to be honest or straightforward with them, saying, when you go on the internet, you know, we're, this is not a protected space. We're not protecting you from the internet, we're giving you access to it. So somebody, you know, there isn't anything in our system that would like stop them from downloading malware or, you know, getting into trouble, it's, it is the internet. We try to protect our computers, and we try to, the staff, I don't feel like I'm saying this very clearly, but we have, we have like Windows Defender on our public machines, we try and take the basic steps. But I wouldn't want to say, you know, come here and use our computers because you'll be a hundred percent safe.
And if I bring my Edge, this is not Edgewood's laptop, this is an example. If I bring my Edgewood laptop to this library and connect to the public Wi-Fi, knowing what happened to the Edgewood schools, I'm not posing a risk to the library, correct?
Yeah, not any more than any other patron, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in theory, if you brought an infected device and you got on our public Wi-Fi, the risk would be in the public arena.
Okay.
But you should be, I mean, that's not to say somebody couldn't figure something out. You know, that's, that's the, the challenge of trying to protect our network. But in theory, we have taken steps to address that.
Okay.
How you are going to do some kind of testing with people trying to penetrate in or hack in? I don't know if the right word is, are there companies out there that you rely on? Or you just go, hmm, let's go to next-door neighbor and say, hey, who's a hacker? What do you do? I don't know.
No, they're, yeah.
Do you have that wealth of information of, that's a resource we can tap into, right?
There are a bunch of consultants who would do that. The one that I've looked into pursuing, and I, I may still, I haven't, it hasn't felt like it's been in urgent need so far, but the state has a contract, I want to say it's either know-before or, I can get you the name of the vendor, but basically, the state of Indiana has a contract with a vendor that.
So you would go through those channels to find a reputable person?
Yeah, they have a system, they, they have a system, I believe the way it starts is they would give you, here's a list of best practices. And I did do a webinar where I saw that, and it didn't look like anything that we weren't already doing. But in addition to that, they have a vendor that they have some sort of state contract with that would give us a discount if we wanted to hire somebody to both prod our network to see where they could find defenses and do the sort of email tests of employees.
Has MCPL ever done that before?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
In the realm of cybersecurity, how difficult would it be to add call numbers to a patron's saved list in our catalog?
Call numbers?
Yeah, currently you can save, you know, a list of books, but they don't have a call number with them. Seriously, I wouldn't be making this up.
You're, you're talking about in, like in Polaris, you log into your account and you can save?
Yeah, so like you have this book list, but then you come to get this giant book list, like say if you're teaching a wonder camp, and you need a bunch of books, and then you realize that the list that you printed out doesn't have any call numbers on it.
Gotcha. So if you pulled that up on your phone, I think you could click through to each of those.
You do, you can click into each one.
Yeah, but you want to, you want to be able to export a report.
How hard would that be, Ned? Like, I don't, I'm just, you know, maybe suggestion from a patron.
I think we could put something like that together next week on an individual basis, rolling something out that I, we could do.
But I, I thought, you know, there may be other people in that same situation who come in with like a list, and they're like, oh, gosh, I didn't, you know.
Yeah, definitely.
You assume, I think, that you could go down your list and find your book.
Yeah, I don't want to say that this is in Vega, that's the sort of feature that is, will be easier to do with Vega. It makes it easier to save lists and that sort of thing.
Maybe just file that idea.
So yeah, I will, I will do that, I'll see what we can do about that.
Like, New York Public Library has it now, and it's got a lot of features that we don't currently, New York Public Library, and it's got, it's got a lot of really, I'm, I'm not sure it has that, and that's something we can report back on.
Yeah, we will find out.
Maybe even a settings thing we could change, but it's, yeah, it's, it looks pretty good.
Yeah, I feel like, yeah, I don't want to promise this in a public meeting, but you know, the, the, a lot of the parts of the website currently, like the staff picks lists and the current, or the new releases, those are things that we've scripted to appear the way they do. So let me talk to my staff and see what we can put together.
Outside of that amazing work with website and all things tech, each time that you said, you probably, hopefully you didn't notice a change, I was thinking, I have no idea what he's talking about, because I didn't notice a change at all. So, thank you for making sure that this is running well.
That is all my staff, those are all the folks I listed. I'm incredibly fortunate to have such an enthusiastic and highly talented staff.
Good.
Kudos, I'm impressed there's only five or six of you.
That's a, that's a lot of work for you.
It's huge, I mean, I really appreciate that.
Good stuff, thanks, Ned.
We've reached the portion of our meeting for public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to come forward and address the board? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. If you guys have it, we are adjourned.